We can now call this meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Here.
Mann.
Here.
Deuster House. Bauer.
Here.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Here. Habermough.
Here.
Farha.
Here.
Sasson.
Here.
Ryan.
Lepper.
Here.
Mussolino.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
Heinecke.
Here.
Hostlog.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Bauer.
I move we excuse the absent Aldermen.
We have a motion of second to excuse the absent Aldermen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
First petition.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
By the following organizations requesting permission to conduct a raffle and have the bond requirement waived, BFW from now through October 13th and Quincy Senior High Athletic Office from August 2013 through August 2014. Clerk recommends approval of the permits.
So moved. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
By the Knights of Columbus requesting permission to hold their annual Tutsi Row Tag Days for people with intellectual disability on September 20th and 21st at various locations in the city.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Habermough.
I move the prayer petition be granted.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
By Quincy Noon Kwanis Club requesting permission to have all permit fees waived associated with the application of the Carson and Barnes Circus to be held at the Quincy Mall on August 31st through September 2nd as a fundraiser for the Quincy Noon Kwanis Club with proceeds raised being given back to agencies in Quincy and Adams County. They were asked in the way the circus permit fee, Section 16.102, and exotic animal fee, Section 22.606.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move the prayer petition be granted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
By Air Evac requesting permission to land at Lowe's parking lot, 6030 Broadway, September 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for Lowe's Breast Cancer Awareness Event. Quincy Fire Department will handle securing the landing zone during landing and takeoff.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the prayer petition be granted. Proper authorities notified.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
By Laura Hesling, event coordinator for the 8th Annual Sammy Fund 5K Run Walk to be held October 12th starting at 9:00 a.m. The 5K Run Walk will start at Jersey Street between 23rd and 24th heading north to 23rd and Main, west to 14th, south to Jersey, east to 16th, south to Kentucky, east to 20th, north to Grove, east to 22nd, south to Aldova Boulevard, east to 24th, west to 23rd, north to York, east to 20th, north to Jersey, east to Beginning Point. There will also be a two-mile walk included in the route. They are requesting no parking signs be posted on the left lane by 6:00 p.m. Friday, October 11th.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Sasson.
I move the prayer petition be granted.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have the monthly income statement of the Department of Utilities for May and June 2013.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman Farha. I move that be received and filed. We have a motion and a second to receive and file. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have a sales tax report for May to be $709,5024.58.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move that be received and filed. We have a motion and a second to receive and file. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have the home rule sales tax report for May to be $809,196.64.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move that be received and filed. We have a motion and a second to receive and file. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have the home rule sales tax report for May to be $809,196.64.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move that be received and filed. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
I have the mayor's appointment. This is Jared Hester. As airport manager, starting August 19th for a one-year term.
Yes, Alderwoman Heinecke.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would like to table this for a month and send it back to the Aeronautics Committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second to refer this back to the Aeronautics Committee and bring this back in one month. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Next appointment is, mayor's appointment is Earl Kevin Reed to Ethnic Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the mayor's appointment to be granted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to grant the mayor's appointment. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
First resolution. As utilities director and interim purchasing director recommend approval of low quote of HD Supply Water Works Limited, Washington, Illinois, in the amount of $8,750 for five new fire hydrants.
Your Honor. Yes, Alderman Brink.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House. Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Habermough.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is chief of police, Police Automatic Committee, interim purchasing director and administrative service director recommend the chief of police be empowered to purchase a police work dog from Logan Haas Kennels for up to $9,500.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Sasson.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Habermough.
I have a question for Chief, or clarification. Hey, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, the dog is going to be paid for out of Protective Benevolence Association funds. Is that correct?
It's actually donated funds that were donated to the PBPA. Mary Jane and Joanne Bauer sisters raised that money specifically for the canine program, and they donate it to the benevolent who then donates it back to...
Okay, they just went through that. Okay. And maybe some kudos here. I think the last couple canines we've purchased have kind of gone something similar to that. They've been donated and...
Yes. Actually, we've never bought a canine with tax dollars.
Yeah, I just thought maybe those folks should be mentioned a little bit. So thank you, and please pass along our thanks to them for all the work they do. Again, I know they work really hard for you guys, so that's great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
Deuster House. Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Habermough.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is police chief and interim purchasing director recommend approval of the city of Quincy participation in the state of Illinois Federal Surplus Property Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Sasson.
I'd like the chief to come forward, kind of explain a little bit what this is, then I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I wish it'd be the motion and the second and then the...
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and now we will open it up to any questions.
I was trying to save you from the trip, so I caught a tree in there, so...
You want to just give us kind of a high review of what this is? Yeah, basically, this resolution would allow us to participate... Is this on?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not talking into it. This resolution would allow us to participate in this government program where we can purchase items at a very reduced cost. It does not commit us to buy. There is no cost to participate, but if we do purchase from this program, we can pay as little as 5% of the cost.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Habermough.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is interim airport director, Aeronautics Committee and interim purchasing director recommend the low quote from Air Specialties Heating and Air Conditioning Incorporated in the amount of $5,649 for removal and installation of a HVAC unit for the main terminal building.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Farha.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Habermough.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is resolution authorizing negotiation of a lease with Great River Aviation, and we have two speakers on this.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman. I move we suspend the rules to allow the two speakers to speak.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor? Opposed? The rules are suspended. Our first speaker tonight will be Mike Curtis, President of Great River Aviation.
It's he not?
Yeah, he's here. And Mr. Curtis, if you could state your name and address for the record before speaking, and I will remind you that you have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Mike Curtis, 218 South 18th Street here in Quincy, Illinois. I'm going to cut mine real short. I have one more guy. On August 15th of this year, all of our renewals are come due at one time. Our contracts for Shell, all of our insurance negotiations, basically, we're trying to get ready for the QU school year. We just bought a new multi-engine trainer for the QU program. If you can reference Dr. Dracy's letter, it is five or six years to shut down. I had borrowed approximately $403,000, and I have to have a long-term plan to pay this money back. I also have a 3/4 million dollar airplane coming in September 16th, and we're opening up a Cirrus Flight Training Center, Maintenance Center. We'll have the latest state-of-the-art glass cockpits for the QU students, as well as a lot of other things. It takes us approximately $35,000 a month just to pay the rent, the copy machines, ice machines, and the payroll. That doesn't include the cost of goods such as gas and oils. Bottom line, we average $80,000 to $90,000 per month just to keep the doors open. I need a long-term payoff plan. With all the requirements for the FAA, for your tests, for your training, 135 operations, 141 aviations, we have to increase our insurance to at least $3 million, which is $5,000 more a year, and you know it's basically, it's hard to do. Great River Aviation, when we took over, we have got the QU program going. We've opened up a lot in Quincy. Great River Aviation has opened 365 days a year, from 5:00 a.m. in the morning until 10:30 p.m. We are your gateway to the community. A lot of people varied different, but we've got Steven Spielberg landing, Burt Reynolds, we've got Richard Petty, we've got Mariah Carey. I can't disclose these people when they come into town. They come in here because it's private. But people will tell you, we have a lot of famous celebrities, refuel, and they look basically the way we are. We're trying to improve the FBO every year. We've added something great every year. Right now, we need to extend the lease badly so that I can go further in debt and pay it back and have a timely manner to do it. Last year, Jeff Steinkamp announced that the Cape Air had made their quota, and when the FAA got the reports, y'all were 56 short. We came in with 164 that put you over your 10,000 deployments. And if anybody wants to go to the FAA, you can verify those records. But yet, we weren't given any credit as we would ever were when he was there. The papers y'all are asking for, the LLC, I give them to Mr. Steinkamp in person. I will provide y'all other copies as soon as possible. Being with what we've done and everything we've put into it, I'm asking y'all to please give us a chance to get an extension so we can move forward. We're doing a lot with the QU program. We're doing a lot with the communities. Everybody in town knows that we're taken care of. You can ask any of our customers, read our reference letters. I thank all of you in the council, and I just really look forward to serving Quincy as your FBO from now till I pass on.
Before you leave, are there any questions? Alderman Farha. I have a couple of questions. First of all, as a fixed base operator, you basically provide services to anyone who wants to buy fuel, repair planes. You've got a mechanic shop, store planes, and also, you provide services in terms of your educational pilot licensing program with Quincy University. So people understand that. You don't purchase anything from the city of Quincy. You provide a service in lieu of any better explanation as an agent, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, go ahead. Go ahead. I don't want to interrupt you.
Basically, you know, we provide anything to do with an airplane. Flight training, maintenance, fueling aircraft when they come in, emergency breakdowns. We had calls to haul organs, and we do everything from hauling organs to... We have several corporations in town we fly backup charter for that places airlines don't run, and then we also provide backup for Titan International, as well as several other companies. I just only want to have permission to name. But the bottom line is, anything to do with the aircraft, we do. And we have built our shop up. We've built our... Andy will get more into detail about our numbers of how many people we've turned out and things like that, but yes, sir.
Second question. You really have not requested to renegotiate the lease. You requested to amend one specific item, the term of the lease, correct?
Yes, sir.
The committee, and Marty Stegeman can join us later if people want explanation, the committee wanted to clear up the language on the rent. Those are the two things that I know of, and Terry can correct me if I'm wrong, that have ever been mentioned. So the idea that we want to totally renegotiate a new lease, I don't think is correct.
No. All we're asking, we had five, five, and five. Our lease expires in 2015. Before I step off, you know, well, I'm committed now. I've already stepped off. I had to meet this August 15th deadline. What we're doing now, we're asking for 20 years. With 20 years' lease, you know, that will give me time to pay back. I'm 60. I'll be 80. I plan on being there. I'm not... I hope, I hope. But, you know, I don't know. But the bottom line is, I will have paid my debt and have a chance to make some money back. It's a matter of just, all we're asking for is an extension. I have to do contracts with Shell, Cirrus Aircraft. None of these will take less than five to 10-year commitments. And it puts us in a spot because all my agreements are due August 15th. Everything is done to renew. So I have to tell Shell I have to defer it. I have to tell Cirrus they won't defer it. And my insurance company, they're going to want their money August 15th.
But just so we don't lose the fact, you haven't asked to renegotiate the lease. What you've asked is to amend the term of the lease. The committee had some concerns about some language with rent to clear up, but other than that, you have not asked to amend, to renegotiate the lease.
No, I asked for an extension.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Curtis? Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will now hear from Andy Dow. Mr. Dow, if you could come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and I will remind you of five minutes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Andy Dow, and I live at 2317 Vermont Street here in Quincy, Illinois. I'm currently the chief flight instructor at Great River Aviation, as well as a general manager out there. I also work at Quincy University as the professor of aviation, as well as the aviation program coordinator. I started working at Great River Aviation in 2003, and it is my very first aviation job that I have had. I also started working at Quincy University, teaching the aviation program in 2005. For Great River Aviation, we fly over 2,100 hours a year for both aircraft flight training, as well as aircraft charter that we serve to local customers. We fly local companies on business meetings that the airlines such as Cape Air do not serve. Our flight school and charter department are both overseen and approved by the Federal Aviation Administration, which we have very strong connections with. We have trained approximately 323 students over the past years since opening Great River Aviation for various flight ratings and certificates. We have a very strong partnership and relationship with Quincy University being the contractual flight training portion for students that are wanting to earn their aviation degrees. Back in the 1940s, Quincy University actually started an aviation program out at the old airport by Pace and Road. We're very excited to actually bring the aviation program back to Quincy University, which started in 2002. And I'm proud to say that this will be our 11th year at Quincy University, starting this Monday, where we will actually have 29 students from all over the country coming to Quincy University just to learn how to fly. We have various students from Illinois, Iowa, Missouri, Texas, Florida, California, and we even had two students come in from the Virgin Islands last year just to come to Quincy University. We have approximately over 20 aviation graduates so far, with our very first being awarded in 2005. Our aviation graduates have worked at many different flight schools around the area, corporate companies. We have one locally here. Our recent student just started and got hired with Trans States Airlines in St. Louis. Others have went to the military. So not only do we conduct flight training, charter operations, maintenance, meeting and greeting of people that come to the airport, but we also serve the community as well. We have given very, several donations for airplane rides to local charities, trying to raise money. We have given out several tours to local area church groups, daycare centers, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We actually have an Aviation Boy Scout Merit Badge Day where we actually have given over 95 Boy Scouts their Aviation Merit Badge. We participate in the Quincy Annual Dogwood Parade for the aviation program, as well as have made a flight breakfast, or basically brought a flight breakfast every single year for the past 10 years for the Quincy University Aviation Club. So as a locally-owned business, we strongly believe in contributing to the life, or the quality of life in our community, so we greatly serve it. And I just wanted to tell you guys a little bit about the aviation program and what we kind of do out there.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink.
Andy, you mentioned 29 students. Is that maximum capacity, or could you handle more?
No, we can handle, we can handle quite a bit more.
And what's the nearest flight school to Quincy?
As far as other, another aviation degree, or just learning how to fly?
Yes, another aviation degree.
Another aviation degree would be Southern Illinois University, all the way down to Carbondale, and there's one kind of close buy-up to Chicago and Lewis University.
So I'm assuming that it's a four-year degree?
Yes, it is. It is a four-year degree, and we have over 20 graduates so far with bachelor's degrees in aviation science.
So somebody entering your program this year, you're really making a four-year commitment to them?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Dow. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to resume sitting in the council. So moved. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Mr. Chairman. Yes, Alderman Farha. This has been, over the last several years before the Aeronautics Committee, several times, they provide a tremendous service to the aeronautics community out there. We have to have a fueler. We have to have, with the amount of traffic, both in the business aviation and the commercial aviation, we've got to have someone that can repair planes. And obviously, with the education program, it's a phenomenal program. My own personal preferences would be to stop the red tape and the nonsense right now and just amend it right here from the council floor. But that wouldn't be fair to anyone. So I'm going to move that we approve the resolution, send it back to the committee to negotiate the lease, which is all this is asking for. It's asking to empower the committee to basically amend the lease, and if the committee so chooses, they can talk about other matters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Alderman Bauer.
Can I have, I got a question for Marty Stegeman. Marty, when we had the farm ground for lease out there, when his time was up, we wouldn't let him renew, right? We made him redo it.
That is correct. We did go out for an RFP.
Okay, thank you. I got another question for legal. Are we getting ourselves in any trouble if we do this for one person and not another?
No, because you have the ability per your code to do it through its section 13.1608, so you can't, you can, it's going to require a 2/3 vote of the council, but you can do it. I think I can help, because this came up last week, towards the end of the week. There was a circular put out, and Marty sent it to us. The FAA has strict requirements to people who provide a service or are bidding. They, I can't remember the technical definition, but it's under the, it's under the Civil Rights Division of the FAA. I talked to her, I know Alderman Deuster House did, and it's not covered by the FAA. We don't have to have any specific term of lease. Now, the farm rental, because we're in a competitive situation where people could actually obtain us, basically, are selling us, excuse me, we're allowing them to obtain a service, do farm stuff, is covered. But the administrator from the FAA was very specific. This is not covered, and I believe you've had a conversation with the FAA regional administrator for our area, and they really don't have an interest in what our term of the lease is. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Habermough.
I don't know if this is for Marty or for Alderman Farha. Are we referring this to the Aeronautics Committee with power so we can, I, I'm with you. Let's move this along. These folks are asking, I'm ready to do it right now.
Well, then, I'm willing to entertain a motion to amend the lease, to do a 20-year lease, right now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is to amend the lease.
This is to amend. Extend the term to 20 years.
So do they, do they pay the same amount they've always been paying then? Is that...
The terms of the lease are, there's a CPI adjustment, so it's us to, up to us to make sure that we collect that. Yes. Right? That's legal counsel? I believe so.
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Deuster House, absent.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Habermough.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan, absent.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes.
Mayor Boatay.
Do you need to? There's 12.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes 13.
Went with the will of the council.
That's 2/3's vote. It's either 13 and 2, or 12 and 2. Which are you, where you want to go?
There you go.
So.
Okay.
Passed.
Resolution is adopted. Apologize.
Okay. Next resolution is Fire Automatics Committee, the fire chief recommend approval of the[1748.01] Next resolution is, Fire Automatic Committee and Fire Chief recommend approval of the bid from, say, more carpets in the amount of $4,367.12 for replacing carpets at station number three, number four, and number five in the living quarters.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Alderman.
I'd like to speak to the chief, please.
I know I brought this up in committee, but I ask if there was any, if you had looked at any other flooring besides carpeting, and the answer was no. Can you tell me why you didn't do it? I understand that are concrete floors, right?
We, we do have alternate flooring in some areas. We have tile in the kitchen areas and the restroom areas, but not in the living quarter areas. Just to give you an idea how long this carpet has lasted, we went back all the way to 1995 in our invoices, and this carpet was purchased prior to that time. It was actually purchased before I came on the department in 1993, so it's held up well for us. For what these guys do, their bedroom area, it would be appropriate to have carpet in there versus tile, so that's why we're seeking to go this route.
Alderman.
It's a pretty low-cost alternative as well.
I could also tell you, if you went to another form of flooring, there would be considerable floor cost, since it's on concrete. I do happen to know a little about that. But, but carpet to carpet would be best, if now you'll be paying a premium for floor preparation.
This seemed to be the most financially responsible way to move forward.
What about making nice-looking concrete? I've seen beautiful concrete floors.
Again, concrete staining and etching is a pretty expensive process. We're much better off going the carpet route, from a financial perspective.
Okay, thank you.
I truly believe that, so.
Chief.
Yes.
Living quarters, this is where they sleep?
Sleep, the day room, basically the station, is what it is, with the exception of the kitchen area, the dining area, and the restroom.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mand. Dusterhouse, absent. Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Heimle.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
No.
Ryan. Absent, just a second. Okay, two. Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
No.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Nine ayes, three noes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is, Fire Automatic Committee interim purchasing director and fire chief recommend approval of the bids from MES in the amount of $6,536.50 for replacement of fire hose.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Mussolino.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mand.
Aye.
Dusterhouse, Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Heimle.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan, Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
No.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is, Fire Automatic Committee and Fire Chief recommend approval of the bid from Traffic Control Corporation in the amount of $17,160 for replacement of preemptive devices.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Muss.
We have Fire Chief, please come up here. Can you just please give us a broad explanation of what these are and what they're used for, please?
Sure. These are traffic control devices that are actually mounted on the mast where the traffic signals hang, and they are used to allow emergency services vehicles to control an intersection. So, basically, as we respond somewhere about two blocks away, we have an emitter on our truck that sends a signal, the traffic light picks it up, and then works to clear the intersection so that we get a green light and all other directions get red lights, so that we can proceed through more safely.
How many intersections do we have these located at?
We have them in 29 intersections total in the city.
Okay, and some of these are faulty that we are replacing, is that correct?
Yes, the ones that we're replacing are faulty. They've been faulty for quite a while, actually, so.
Okay, how long do they usually last?
Uh, the, most of what's wrong here is the traffic control card, the actual brain box, if you will, and most of these have been in between 15 and 20 years.
Thank you.
Alderman Sasson.
Chief, how long have these been out?
Um, a lot of these have been out at least five years.
And this money, you budgeted for?
We did budget for this, yes. And this will get everything operational, and then the plan would be moving forward to address them as, as the costs come up.
Alderman Heinecke.
Your Honor, you're up here.
You want to turn your mic on? Thank you.
No, not really. While you're up here, it's $600 that we could have gotten from the people that were ordering this from, correct?
$600, I'm not following.
$600 per intersection, if we had the same company that we're getting them from install it.
No, that's, that's programming.
Uh-huh.
I don't think we're going to need to have the programming cost, and you have another resolution before you tonight.
Okay.
And we're going to have a local bidder do that. That $600 will be on top of what the local installers would do. That's an additional fee, but I don't think we're going to need to have that done, because what we're using and operating with is a very simplified system. These systems can do much more complex things. They can involve GIS mapping. We're not looking to do that. It's not necessary in the city of Quincy. If we could just control intersections as we go, we'll be fine, so.
Okay.
Doesn't look like we need those costs.
Okay.
And we can entertain discussions on that on the next resolution. Okay. Alderman Brink.
Chief, is any other emergency services use this?
Uh, the Anups County ambulance does right now, and I know Chief Copley, I just had a conversation with him, and they're entertaining the possibility of doing that, as well as Tri-Township Fire Department does. And probably know where you're going with this. Tri-Township has actually installed a number of these intersections themselves. A previous chief and the city entered into an agreement with Tri-Township that if they install them, we would maintain them. So we have a responsibility to maintain them.
So all the costs comes out of the Fire Department budget?
It does, yes.
Thank you.
Well, the capital budget, I should say, but, yes.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mand.
Aye.
Dusterhouse, Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Heimle.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan, Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is, Fire Automatic Committee and Fire Chief recommend approval of the bid from Supreme Electric in the amount of $9,877 for the installation of the preemptive devices.
Your Honor.
Alderman Mussolino.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Alderman Heinecke.
I think you answered it.
Oh, okay, sorry, I saw your mic on. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mand.
Aye.
Dusterhouse, Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Heimle.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan, Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
No.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Ten ayes, two noes, two absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Final resolution. To enter into and execute the letter of intent and proposed development agreement to partner with Coastal Hydro Power Corporation requesting an option to develop proposed hydro generating facilities at Lock and Dams 24 and 25 currently under control of the city of Quincy.
Before we begin this discussion, I'd like to make a small comment on my thoughts on the pursuant of hydropower plants on Lock and Dam 24 and 25. As an alderman, I was not in favor of borrowing money and placing risk on the taxpayer for Lock and Dam 21, and it was apparent during my term as an alderman that at every corner, there was unforeseen circumstances that the city of Quincy could not account for. In the end, we lost precious time and money that could have been better spent elsewhere. This proposal is being voted on today, because when I came into office, I found there had been little to no movement on these dams since we obtained the preliminary permits. When I took office, I felt it was best interest of the community to have an open discussion on the opportunity to monetize these permits, but to also be clear on the risk and the timeframe for the community. What we are voting on today is Coastal is asking us to sign a letter of intent, which would then trigger negotiations until the end of the year between Coastal and the city of Quincy. The negotiations, after talking with Coastal, is my opinion, would be lengthy, and in my opinion, based on other communities, we would probably have to hire outside legal firms who have had experience in these kind of contract negotiations, and also in the energy industry. The first round of negotiations would only be to structure the agreement. That would take place by the end of the year. The city council would then be asked to vote on that agreement, the structure, by the middle of January. If Coastal's board and the city council approve the structured agreement, that would be sent on to FERC. If FERC approved it, then we would go on to the stage where we went after feasibility studies, where we estimated project costs, negotiated electric costs, so we can get firm numbers for the communities on the return on investment. That process, with talking with Coastal, and their timeframe, would take at least a year to complete. Once that negotiation was complete, it would then be presented once again to the public and to the city council and to Coastal's board. We would then have a vote, up or down, on the definitive agreement. Only then would Coastal seek financing for the project. I think it has been said in the community, that Coastal is willing to pay for the build-out of these plants, and Neil Anderson from Coastal Hydropower sent an email today that that is not true. They are willing to pay for the costs up to the feasibility studies, and then talk about how to pay for the build-out thereafter. The financing for those plants would then take an additional six to nine months, which means the city of Quincy, in a best-case scenario, would not see dollar one for two years from today. I believe Coastal is honest in their presentation of this timeline, but my past experience with hydro leads me to believe that it will take much longer than presented in, to get to the construction phase, and that will take a large portion of my term in office. Everyone on this council and watching here today knows that we have a lot of challenges facing this community. We need to nurture a business environment that'll bring good-paying jobs. We need to find a larger funding commitment to our outdated infrastructure. We need to improve our city services. We need to deal with the Newcom Hotel, how to pay for combined sewer overflow upgrades, and that's just to name a few. I believe the time and commitment of my administration is best served on those issues. If our permits expire, Coastal Hydropower is free to file for these permits. If studies performed at Lock and Dam 21 have value, someone will make us an offer. If the will of this council today is to delay the vote, I will work as hard as I can for each and every one of you to get the information you need to make a decision. If the council wishes to proceed, I will not impede the will of the council, but a decision, one way or another, is needed so our community, the administration, and this council can move forward. I will now entertain any discussions or any motions.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Brink, and I will remind you that if anybody's to make a motion to table, no discussion can happen, so if anybody has a question before a motion to table, now would be the time to do it.
Your Honor, this is a very important vote for the city of Quincy, for the future of Quincy, and I believe it's important to have a full city council present for such an important vote. Therefore, I would move that we table this for one month.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to table for one month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is tabled for one month.
I have report of finance and transfers to be a negative figure of $32,500, paying back a transit loan. Expenses be $338,623.42, and payroll be $669,680.76. Farha, Sasson, Hostlog, Heimle, committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the report be received and filed, and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mand.
Aye.
Dusterhouse, Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Heimle.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan, Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolino.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Hostlog.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, two absent.
So ordered.